Madam Chair, we are live when you're ready to begin.
Okay, let's get started then. We'll go ahead with the work session tonight.
All right, wonderful. I thought what I would do tonight is recap some changes that were made to mostly Article 1 and kind of bring that to your attention and then move on to the, because conservation of residential districts, which really didn't need a whole lot of change. That might be a little bit different when we get into the commercial areas. Just to let y'all all know, I'm going to go before the Economic Development Authority in June, July rather, and talk to them about some potential changes, just to kind of get their feedback on the commercial districts. And so, you know, that's where we'll go with that. And depending on what they have to say, if they say anything, I'll incorporate some of their suggestions in with the text. And it'll probably be August before we talk about this again. Okay, so I'll start with Article 1. Not a whole lot of suggestions for change, but I just wanted to point it out, point out a few things that were mentioned last time. One was the definition of a bed and breakfast den, which is on page 3 of 30. Basically, everybody around here defined the bed and breakfast, but I also borrowed a little bit from the Planting Dictionary of Definitions, which was also a very useful resource. I think sometimes they put things a little more concisely than others. Let's see, what's next? I'm kind of thumbing through. The next thing I think was bike paths. Let me get to that. Yeah, I added a definition on page 8 of 30 for a multi-use path and for a bike path. And later, I added a definition of sidewalk. We have a definition of sidewalk in our city code as it relates to golf carts. So obviously, we're not talking about golf carts here. But multi-use path is that area of a park street designated by the city for pedestrian travel and the use of unicycles, bicycles, or tricycles. And then I just put golf carts may be allowed in accord with Chapter 78 of City Code. That's a separate approval process, but I wanted to point that out. Excuse me. Bike paths is that area of a public street designated by the city for the use of unicycles, bicycles, or tricycles. Most of the time, you see a definition that covers bicycles and tricycles, but I added unicycles. At one point in time, I used to be able to ride one of those things, but I don't know if nobody anymore. Maybe my son, I don't know. Restaurant, we had some discussions about restaurants last time. Excuse me, allergies. Restaurant, any building in which for compensation, food or beverages are dispensed for consumption on the premises, including, among other establishments, cafes, tea rooms, confectionery shops, including catering in conjunction therewith. Restaurant, takeout, or drive-through, which would be kind of what you think of with fast food establishment where food is prepared and served in a form ready for consumption. You can go from there. Does include pickups, does include drive-throughs as well. Short-term rental, I think we talked about short-term rentals last time. I just checked it. You know, I'm really glad we're going with the short definition, because the latest from General Assembly is they appointed a panel to discuss what we're going to be able to require a conditional use permit for short-term rentals.
What section are you at, Wally?
I'm sorry, I'm on page 10 of 30.
Page 10, at the top.
I'm sorry, I should have said the page number. So I'm glad we went with the short definition, because things are going to evolve at the state level. So what we just said basically is that they have to use a city-approved form. We will ask for everything we want right now. We may not be able to do it in the next year or so, depending on how the General Assembly goes. Let me see. Oh, yeah, travel trailer. I had forgotten to make changes last month, but I updated a little bit from the definitions, the planning definitions as well. This is on page 12.
Wally, just let us know what page you're on when you start talking.
All right, page 12.
Thank you.
I will.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Okay. Travel trailer, vehicle, vehicular portable structure standing on wheels, towed or hauled by another vehicle, and, and, need to put the word in "used" there, and "used" as a temporary dwelling for travel, recreation, and vacation, or used for carrying of goods as objects or as a temporary office. So I think that covers just about everything. It's not a manufactured home, it's not a modular home, nothing like that. Okay, let me, I don't think we had any other changes that we discussed in Article 1 or Article 3. Still waiting on Article 2, which should be forthcoming soon. Okay, so on page, all right, my pages for Articles 1 and Article 3 went 30 of 30, and then the pagination started again. So this is page 1 of 13, about two-thirds of the way into this pamphlet here. Article 4. Everybody there?
Yeah.
Okay. Article 4 under permitted uses, I had a lot of notes under this, and I really think it has a solution in search of a problem. I think what we need to do is just get rid of the conditional use permit language, because if you remember, we allow everything by conditional use permit, if it's not a permitted use. Unless it's specifically prohibited in the district, we do allow it by special use, conditional use permit. So I really think number one, the answer is, do we really need to list these uses? I think the answer is no. I don't think we have to, because they're allowed anyway by the disuse. Okay. On page 2 of 13, we had some wording under Section 4-8 yards. In this district, the minimum side yard for each structure shall be 15 feet or more, and the total width of the two required sides shall be 30 feet or more. The more we thought of it, we just need to say 15 feet for a side setback, because they're going to equal 30 feet or more anyway, unless a variance is involved. And I was trying to think of how in the world they came up with this language. But, you know, as a variance, if we allow somebody to go to 10 yard, 10 feet in a side yard, we don't make them give another five feet on the other side. So it just didn't seem to be useful language.
So if you put a, like a shed, it's not a main building, so it could be in that area of 30 feet between the main structures?
It could be an accessory building, depending on the height, is allowed to encroach on the side yard more. If it's under 13 feet, it can go seven and a half feet on the property line. If it's greater than 13 feet, but it is an accessory building, structure, it can go to 15 feet.
Okay.
So, for example, I'm thinking of a project that came before, it's a couple months ago, that it would have to be 15 feet on all four sides from the property.
Well, the rear yard setbacks are 30 feet typically in residential districts. So it would mean to be 30 feet, unless, if you have a rear yard, it has to be 30 feet. Not all lots have a rear yard because of, you know, peculiar, there might be a double front lot, for example. They would have two side yards, so they'd get a little bit of a break as far as looking at an accessory building in the two side yards. 6 and 412 on page 3 of 13, this is language in every single residential district we have. Of course, as you remember, we've redone the subdivision ordinance. So what I did is I've just changed it to say, "Before approval of a subdivision in this district, the requirements of the subdivision ordinance and other ordinances of the city shall have been met." So that's really all I did there. Once again, on page 3 of 13, under 5-2, I got rid of the wording for conditional use permits. Everything there I struck. I did add accessory dwelling units, meaning the requirements Article 12. Article 12, and we'll get to Article 12, but Article 12 deals with all the regulations if you want to do an accessory dwelling unit, you know, whether it's for grandma, or whether it's for, you know, a son, or whoever. And we do allow those, as long as they meet the requirements of Article 12. We allow farm animals, which Section 1-17 explains on that, but I just wanted to put it in as a permitted use, because we do allow. And then I renumbered everything else. Okay, let's see here. Number 11 on page 4 of 13, agriculture with a conditional use permit, except for farm animals, which are regulated in accord with Section 1-17 of the ordinance. Let me see here, this is the requirement. And again, 5-12 on page 6 of 13, change that wording about approval of the subdivision. And, you know, I really think the rest of the residential districts, well, actually, let me point out one thing. I did this in, and all of our districts were on page 8 of 13, 6 and 6-9, special provisions of corner lots. Really, we're not so much talking about a distance of 25 feet from the intersection, but we're talking about a radius of 25 feet from the intersection. So I changed that wording from distance to radius. And other than that, everything else sort of repeats itself through all the residential districts. So that's, that's the long and short of what I've got.
Good question, Wally.
Sure.
If a house is on a regular lot, the setback is 30 feet from the curb. So what we're talking about here on this really unusual corner lot is a radius of 25 feet.
Yeah, I could probably draw it out better than I could explain it. But your setbacks are generally 35 feet or 60 feet from the center line, whichever is greater.
You're right.
That's your front setbacks. Now, when we talk about the, the distance at corner lots, the zoning ordinance tries to explain it as where the two lines meet, the side yard, well, you have two front yards, where they meet and the distance from there. But what you're really talking about is a radius from that point where those lines meet. So that's why I changed it from distance to radius.
But it's 25 feet instead of a radius of 30, it's 25.
It's 25.
So it's just slightly different than the standard.
Right, right. Yeah, let me, that's a good point. Let me, let me go back to that and take a look at that again. Okay, no structures fitted to shrubbery or other structures. What we're trying to do there is really preserve the site triangle. So, you know, even if you could place an accessory dwelling 7.5 feet from the property line, you wouldn't, you probably wouldn't want to do it, and you wouldn't be able to do it in that area, because you're not, you're not sufficiently off the street. You're interfering with the site triangle. That's really what that is. And it's just for corner lots. What I've got?
Does anyone have any concerns about anything that's over a lot of this, looks like?
The language that we've looked at so far, and I'm going to let the city attorney and city manager take a look at it, just to kind of make sure we're all throwing it in the same direction, which I don't anticipate won't be, but, you know, I just, you know, Randy is the zoning administrator, so I'd certainly want to give him courtesy.
You know, I have just one suggestion, and that is- You know, I have just one suggestion, and that is, uh, a lot of these changes are required because the state has a requirement that is levied on us. And therefore, it's not really up to our discretion or anything else, it's really the state that's governing it. Maybe you could come up with a color code that says we're making these changes because of the state, and that way we know that it's really the state that's governing these changes, not really something that may have come up.
I could do that, maybe, uh, a green color, like, you know, legal green.
Yeah, because there's no debate there. I mean, it's, it would be helpful, I think, just a suggestion.
I could do that. That's a good suggestion.
That is good. All right.
Not from you.
Boy, yeah, that was.
Very good. So I'll get some discount. And it will start in August. All right. All right. And the last is the work session that we held on May the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes as noted correction from March twentieth? Do we have a second?
I'll go ahead and second this one.
Ready for the vote? Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Gysinger?
Aye.
Uh, Chairwoman Shriver?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. The minutes pass, I'm sorry.
All right, and the minutes for the regular session, March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, do we have a motion to accept those minutes with the corrections that have been noted?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as noted correction from March twentieth.
Have a second?
I'll go ahead and second this one.
Ready for the vote? Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
I wasn't here, can I approve this?
Yeah, you can.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Gysinger?
Uh, Chairwoman Shriver?
Aye.
The minutes passed.
All right, and, uh, the last is the work session that we held on May the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion to accept those as written?
Oh my, a motion?
Second?
Second.
All right.
All right, Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Gysinger?
Uh, Chairwoman Shriver?
Aye.
The minutes passed.
All right, and, uh, the last is the work session that we held on May the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion to accept those as written?
Oh my, a motion.
Second?
Second.
All right.
All right, Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Gysinger?
Uh, Chairwoman Shriver?
Aye.
The minutes passed.
Thank you. All right, uh, we're ready to have the audience for visitors, and at this time, if you have something to address the Planning Commission about other than the public hearing items, we would welcome anyone to come to the podium, give your name and address, and happy to hear what you'd like to tell us. Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing, I mean, the audience for visitors, and we will move on to the public hearing tonight. We have a request for a conditional use permit by John R. Martin for the operation of aquacultural activity at three sixty-six Cove Road, tax map parcel forty dash oh one dash zero zero dash zero 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 one, Zoned B two, business commercial. We have a presentation Thomas is gonna give us on this public hearing item.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission, I do want to speak, um, briefly to, um, the memo, uh, the staff memo before I dive into the presentation. Um, the proposal is, uh, as from the applicant for, uh, the operation of aquacultural activities at three sixty-six Cove Road, I'll get into just exactly what that means momentarily. Uh, the property is Zoned B two, business commercial, um, and the city code defines the intent of the district as to provide sufficient space for a wide variety of businesses, commercial, industrial, and miscellaneous service activities. Fish and seafood retail only is permitted use in the district, but not necessarily processing, um, or what I will explain as an agricultural activity or wholesale. Um, the property, uh, is at the, I'll say, the, the end of Messick Road as it turns into Cove Road, um, and the adjacent are, of course, uh, the city, and there is another parcel owned by the applicant, uh, to its north. There is no anticipated, uh, traffic issue or, or access issue, um, and, uh, what has been very important in the last few, uh, conditional use permits we've, that you all have considered, and is important in all of them, is how it relates to the comprehensive law. So, uh, the, 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 uh,
Okay, now we're ready. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Pecoson Planning Commission Regular Session tonight, June 22, 2023. We'll call it to order, and at this time, I'm gonna invite anyone who would like to join us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Invocation will be the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Now, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes. And we had a work session on March 20, 2023. And we have, Thomas let us know tonight that he's handed out some corrections on our work sessions. He's already caught some things. And the first is the March 20 meeting, I believe. We have a handout, so if we have a motion, you will need to make the motion to accept them with the corrections that have on the handout.
So this is the handout?
Yes. And he had some things that he had to...
What was beside your place was a slight amendment to the work session minutes that were sent last week, as well as the regular session. The changes are reflected in the handout, very technical in nature. So the motion for the work session and regular session should be just to adopt them as amended by staff, and that's what we'll sign and adopt, and is currently, and will be available if anyone wants a copy of those.
Appreciate that.
Yes. Mainly, they're just, one of them was type O, and then the other one was a technical, a technical amendment to the work session, work session, Thomas? Because the Chairwoman Emmett came in late, so we made the technical saying that she was here, but she didn't come in late. That's the, that's the two changes to the two minutes.
So that's for the work session? Of March 20 and the regular session of March 20. So we can make a motion for the work session first.
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we accept the work session minutes for Monday, March 30, 2023.
March 20.
March 20, 2023.
As corrected by staff?
As corrected by staff, noting that Emmett was...
That I misspelled your name.
Yeah. I'll second.
Second? All right, thank you. All right, and with that, we can take the vote.
All right. Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger?
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver?
Aye.
The motion passes. The minutes pass, I'm sorry.
All right, and the minutes for the regular session, March 20, 2023, do we have a motion to accept those minutes with the corrections that have been noted?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as noted correction from March 20. You have a second?
I'll go ahead and second this one.
Ready for the vote? Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
I wasn't here, can I approve them?
Yeah, you can.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger? Chairwoman Shriver?
Aye.
The minutes passed.
All right, and the last is the work session that we held on May the 15, 2023. Do I have a motion to accept those as written?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All right.
All right, Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger?
Aye.
Chairwoman Shriver?
Aye.
The minutes passed.
Thank you. We're ready to have the audience for visitors, and at this time, if you have something to address the Planning Commission about, other than the public hearing items, we would welcome anyone to come to the podium, give your name and address, and happy to hear what you'd like to tell us. Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing, I mean, the audience for visitors, and we will move on to the public hearing tonight. We have a request for a conditional use permit by John R. Martin for the operation of aquacultural activity at 366 Cove Road, tax map parcel 40-01-00-0001, Zoned B2 Business Commercial. We have a presentation Thomas is gonna give us on this public hearing item.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission, I do want to speak briefly to the memo, the staff memo, before I dive into the presentation. The proposal is, as from the applicant, for the operation of aquacultural activities at 366 Cove Road. I'll get into just exactly what that means momentarily. The property is Zoned B2 Business Commercial, and the city code defines the intent of the district as to provide sufficient space for a wide variety of businesses, commercial, industrial, and miscellaneous service activities. Fish and seafood retail only is permitted use in the district, but not necessarily processing, or what I will explain as an aquacultural activity or wholesale. The property is at the, I'll say, the, the end of Messick Road as it turns into Cove Road, and the adjacent are, of course, the city, and there is another parcel owned by the applicant to its north. There is no anticipated traffic issue or air access issue. And what has been very important in the last few conditional use permits, we've, that you all have considered, and is important in all of them, is how it relates to the comprehensive plan. And in Chapter Four, Economics of the Comprehensive Plan, the second strategy reads, and I quote, "At Messick Point encourages the development of local seafood industry and support services, including the possible development of specialty retail, aquaculture, fish markets, marine support services, restaurants, pleasure craft facilities, wildlife refuge tours, watercraft rentals, and charters, and other compatible recreational uses." And of course, with that said, it's safe to say that we staff find the requested use fitting for the property and in line with the comprehensive plan. This has already been read. The applicant and the request was legally advertised, and per the application is to facilitate aquaculture activities and propose 30 by 60-foot commercial building. There is a second building on the plan, but that is just to be used for storage, not necessarily the requested use. And in conversations with the applicant, the desire to produce and process seafood in, in the proposed building, the 30 by 60 structure, the two main activities being the processing of oysters and blue crabs, or shedding soft crabs. Here are some state code definitions of aquaculture and aquaculture facility. I'll read just those two for you. It means the propagation, rearing, enhancement, and harvest of aquatic organisms in controlled or selected environments conducted in marine estuarian brackish or fresh water. And then an aquaculture facility means any land structure or other appurtenance that is used for aquaculture, including any lab, hatchery, pond, raceway, pen, cage, incubator, or other equipment used in aquaculture. State code definitions continued that are referenced in the one mentioned before. This is the site, 366 Cove Road. This is, I'll give you a better of idea of where exactly it is. We'll say it's on the other side of the hill at Messick Point. We see this slide almost every time we have a CUP, but this is the permitted uses in the B2 district. And you'll see towards the end of the first section where it says, "Fish and seafood retail only." It specifically says retail only. Of course, this is not a retail, which is why a conditional use permit was submitted. This is a conceptual site plan. I know it's hard to see, but it does lay out the property. In blue is the small building, not associated with, you know, the use per se, but just for storage of equipment. And then the red building, the 30 by 60, that's what you see at the bottom. That's where the activities will, will take place. I tried to make it a little easier to see approximate building locations. You can see the approximate location of, of the 30 by 60 building in yellow, and the storage building in black. Six recommended conditions. This was in understanding the requested activities or the intended use, and we, we got to these in conversation with the applicant, with the surveyor. I will read them to you. This permit allows for aquacultural activities, aquaculture defined by state code. You can see the quote there, what I just read. The second condition is that at no time shall seafood retail be conducted onsite unless necessary site improvements are approved by the City of Pecoson and other necessary agencies. Mr. Martin really wants to make use of the site and its current condition, which wouldn't facilitate a retail use or meet the requirements of a, you know, publicly entered retail store. That's why that condition is there. Permitted activities are defined by aquaculture and the related processing thereof, and solely the wholesale thereof. Approval of the permit shall be granted with strict adherence to the submitted site planning, site plan concerning the size and location of buildings, and is subject to all necessary approvals by the Board of Zoning Appeals. This application, in its form that the site plan was given to you all for the CUP, will go to the BZI next week for the necessary variances. One, for the buildings and the resource protection area, and two, for that 30 by 60-foot structure variances necessary from the setback from Cove Road. The fourth, we see, in all CUPs, the use must comply with all local, state, and federal permits, licenses, and regulations. And if at any time the use is operating in violation of any of the regulations set forth by the aforementioned agencies, the city council may revoke the permit. If at any time the specified permitted use on the property is discontinued for a period of two more years, the permit shall become null and void, and then, of course, city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. I am happy to answer any questions you may have. The, the gist of the application is that the requested and desired activities really are outside of the scope of seafood retail, but Mr. Martin has a seafood business that is wholesale in nature, family-run, operated and run in nature, and this is to facilitate those operations. If you don't have anything for me, I'll, I'll take a seat.
Thomas, we'll go ahead and have the public hearing on it. At this time, it is open. If anyone would like to come to the podium and contribute anything about this particular request, we would welcome you coming, and please give us your name and your address.
My name is Anthony Dwayne Potts. I go by Dwayne. I live at 601 Old Lakeside Drive in York County, and I'm the land surveyor doing the site plan ultimately for this facility. Mr. Martin is wanting to put this building down there in a position that he can get saltwater to the facility and back to shed the crabs, to grow the oysters, whatever he's gonna do, and to allow for access to the pier without impeding, you know, traffic going back and forth to that. He already does a lot of seafood stuff in Pecoson, and this is just a continuation of that. Do you have any questions? Me? Seeing none? No?
Okay, then, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any, anyone else that would like to come up and speak? If not, we'll go and close the public hearing and take this under consideration by the Planning Commission.
I'm kinda curious, what, what happens to the, how do you deal with the byproducts of...
And if you don't mind, come to the podium so the audience at home can hear your answer to that. Sorry to have to ask you to do it, but...
I can get the microphone and bring it to him. I can bring a microphone to you.
Take your time.
Are you sure?
He's okay.
Okay.
He's gonna prove that's just because he can do it.
I, yeah, I know. He's faster than I could get out.
I'm, I'm just curious. How, what do you do with the byproducts of, of that type of business that you're running right there?
When we raise, we're gonna raise the oysters from rolled spat, and when they get to two and a half inches, we'll put them in the water, in cages. And then when we bring them in, if we shuck them, the, the, the oyster shells will go back into the river. And that's all the waste we'll have.
Is there a set area that, that they go back into?
Can I expand, can I expand on that, Mr. Martin?
Ma'am.
So, Mr. Martin, we, the city currently has an oyster lease, and Mr. Martin currently uses our oyster lease from the city to harvest the oysters. Now, from a biological standpoint, the spat, the baby oysters, the only way that they can grow, they have to grow on the back of oyster shells. They can't grow on anything else. So to return the oyster shells back to the river is required in order to have the new spat grow. So it's almost like a, you know...
It's a oyster farm.
It's a, it's a cycle. So he has a designated area that he grows the oysters, and it's mandated through the city and the, the, we just, we just renewed your lease, right, last year? So he's in good standing in terms of that. He'll, he'll return the oysters within his designated area, and that's, that's what, that's, hopefully that will answer your question.
Oh, it does, kinda. What about the crabs? What do you do when they're...
I don't anticipate messing with crabs for the near future. I mean, we're gonna probably stick to the oysters.
Just curious, I'm from here, so. I kayak right around there, I'm just curious. If I can kayak something different when the wind blows, so. But no, one other question, too, is curious, about how many people do you think that you'll employ?
Probably, I would say, 10 max.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions, Mr. Martin, while he's at the podium?
Now, I know of several other places that do the same work, so it's not unusual, nor un-Pecoson-like to do what you're doing. So it's the right place?
Yes, sir, right place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bonnie, I do have a question, and I don't, Thomas, this is you on a Wally. So the reason why this doesn't completely fall into the B2 as is, is because there's no public-facing aspect.
Right.
So B2 is purely supposed to be that service-oriented, and so it's...
It permits retail-only, you know, a seafood market, a Captain Harrell's, for, for example, not, you know, the production or necessarily aquaculture facilities, you know, wouldn't be permitted in the B2, or the wholesale thereof. That's why this conditional use permit is in front of you.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Are we ready to make a motion to...
Sure.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve this conditional use permit.
Okay, we're ready to take the vote.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.